Is for our record's moment. Uh, speaking here in the Budget and Finance Conference Room. Uh, you're joined by the best records. It's like from the Office of Legislative Services and the Speaker's Office and Controller. For those that are listening online, we actually did sit here for about twenty minutes. Um, just kind of catching up. We had a short break from our public period, so it's supposed to be back here in the committee room to conduct regular business. Um, it's good to see the Controller, thank for being here. We have this Karen from Office of Legislative Services, Mr. Rodney Taki here, Ms. Kristen Lowell, welcome back. It's good to see you, thank you for being here. And is there a new member from the Office of Legislative Services who'd like to introduce themselves?
I guess. You heard of them?
Um, sure, just go through the mic. He's actually on the screen. Oh, all of these, sorry.
This is Sam. Good morning, everyone. Shai, my name is Sanjay Nishan. So if I have a mission, my decision, but she's energy, that should get the investment. They are very much. I am the. I just started with oral seeing as a legislative analyst, uh, hired to this position. I was with the Naval Police Department as the Criminal Information System Specialist. So, uh, some of you are about being, I recognize from our previous meetings. Um, it's great to be here. I look forward to working with everyone in the legislative branch. I'm excited and motivated and committed to achieve this new position. And of course, to the Naval Nation, not an adult people who is done. But thank you, thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. Uh, speaking to you.
Thank you, Mr. Sifandji, and the first one of the Office of Legislative Office. We appreciate your service and making the call over to the legislative branch. All right. With that, we're gonna.
Welcome to this.
We're gonna involve this to order as the thirty-fourth. Mr. Taki, could you, uh, call, or, um, state evidence certification?
Good morning, members of the Budget Finance Committee. This is both offered the Budget Finance Committee, the Twenty Fifth Amendmentation Council regular meeting for June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call Honorable Shabine Parrish. Honorable Shabine Parrish is present, Honorable Charles R. Slater.
Present.
Honorable Charles R. Slater is present, Honorable Norman Edgway.
Here.
Honorable Norman Edgway is present, Honorable Amber Kison-Pacari. Honorable Amber Kison-Pacari is present, Honorable Sheriff Yazi. Honorable Lester S. Yazi.
Good morning, I'm present.
Honorable Lester S. Yazi is present, Director of Finance is present, Wisconsin's to call for this regular meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taki, for your dedication, Yazi will be speaking until she arrives. That's what's being announced before we begin that tonight, there is a just move in Round Rock, Arizona. At starting at four thirty, just moving in Arizona tonight and at the TMC, starting at five. There's a just move at Teneros tonight at the, starting at five. So there's also a just move in Shantso, Arizona, starting at five. Or just move is today. All right, okay, cool. With that, thank you, Mr. Taki, for taking attendance. We do have four this morning. Um, and welcome to everyone. I just wanted to sign a short welcome, and let's get it started. Uh, delegate, you have the stuff in a invitation this morning?
No.
Yeah, the evental cannot be denied, uh, by chair. Voice on, not so easily, shouldn't. Well, she got it, said, remember, it was a lot simple. Um, Vice Chair Honorable Rivers of the Budget Finance Committee. Our staff, the Controller, Mr. Sanjay Nishan, that's a big, big, uh, to be coming aboard with our program. There are, uh, legislative, uh, staff, uh. Did you hear about, uh, things about taxes, and we'll see, we're only, we, we are still, but she, she, I think, probably, but it. But overall, we actually have done, uh, which is, uh, what they gave in, and then, and she get, he get, he is, but all.
What are they in, they're not gonna, they're, she get, he get, he is for though. Uh, Joe, pardon, I just need to, I don't know, he has been in, and he's not going to, he's trying to go, he's going to go, he's going to, he's going to be, he's going to go. That's not me, but I'll be there, I'll pass, he's not, he's not, he's not. We're going to wash it down the face of, we can't wait, you know, I can't be, the show, and I should add, I can't be, I'm going to wash it down. Not for you, I'm going to be, not get the show, hey, we're getting this thing that all we got, I can't, I can't believe. Mr. First, you know that, sweet, you know that, she does this. I'm the vision, I'm so, I don't know how to go, we can't, I don't know what to go on, so I started. It's annoying, they try out, it's people, uh, sweet, they design, they learn their fashion, they got me to know, I'm the, this is cool. I mean, uh, he, they, he's so much of, uh, why we, man, especially in the so, and he's not needing to talk, that's it, so he, um, watching, he, he, uh, he's a, there's a goal, she, she, oh, tell her.
Revenues of two hundred and four million, four hundred and thirty nine thousand. We're projecting non capital expenses to be two hundred and twenty seven. So negative revenue over expenses of two point seven million. And this is basically just. Uh, projected revenue and projected uh expenses in the uh. Uh, the base planning amount. Um, this is before the permanent trust fund income, interest allocation of four million. And Shana, what we're trying to illustrate here is historically, we haven't used the forty million in permanent trust fund income. We were actually underspending the actual revenues um. That the general fund actually brings in since the passage of cap thirty twenty one. Um, back to audited year twenty twenty two. And so. If you look at the calculation for each year. We add in the forty million to the revenue over expenses amount. And you get this uh, and then we also add an unpermitted trust fund interest. And you can see, oh, year over year, we have a hundred and nineteen million. And audited twenty twenty two, that was unspent, that includes all general fund interests. The permanent trust fund allocation and the permanent trust fund excess. Um, audit twenty three, we have. Um, revenue over uh, or total available of ninety eight million. And unaudited for twenty twenty four, hundred and sixty one million. And you can see if you add those three up. That basically roughly comes out to the three hundred and fifty million we've been reporting in U U F B. This is where our U U F B continues to balloon because we're not. We're not even spending the revenue that's allocated through the general fund, and therefore we're not even touching the permanent trust fund interest historically. And so because of that, you know, on the second page, I start to discuss what we see. And I, I know in fiscal year twenty two, well, this went over exactly what I just said. And because of that, we're making some recommendations to the committee to consider, because I mean, uh, permanent trust fund interest. Five year plan is, is coming to do, or we're gonna be in our last year of that plan. For the budget that we're contemplating now for twenty six. So the new plan would probably need to be passed sometime. Either the winner or the, probably the winner of. Twenty twenty, the winter session in January of twenty six, because we would have to use that. That new five year plan for the twenty seven budget, which will start next March. So we have about six months, I think, to try and start figuring out what the new five year plan might look like. Um, and so we're making these recommendations. We recommend that the committee should look closely at what appears to be the non use. Of actual revenues in the past three fiscal periods. Uh, this indicates, as I mentioned, that the permanent, permanent trust fund annual forty million interest annual. Forty million allocation is not necessary further, nor is any of the permanent trust fund interest excesses. What we're saying here is it appears, based on prior spend with your rates. That we're not touching any of the permanent trust fund interest in the annual budget. Conversely, the committee should engage in discussing discussions. With each branch to discuss the actual operating needs of the Navajo Nation. Given that there has been no demonstrated need for the current forty million dollar allocation in cap thirty twenty one. The Navajo Nation should begin to address needs such as repairs and maintenance to aging capital assets. Future capital projects, increases in benefits to Navajo Nation members. And supplemental funds to perceive underfunded direct services. Uh, the third recommendation would be that the committee should begin considering using the overall P T F I. Which is permanent trust fund interest to reformulate the current five year plan. And this may include leveraging that interest to accomplish capital needs within the Navajo Nation. What we mean by that. Is potentially using the interest that we're not using now to fund debt service when we can borrow money to address capital needs in our projects. Um, much the same way we're contemplating the flat twenty one fund legislation. The Office of Controller believes that the Navajo Nation should have a very clear and separate operating and capital budgeting process. Um, there is a de- demonstrated non use of actual revenues over the past three fiscal years. And we believe that a highly effective capital plan could be, could be established with those excess funds. Uh, we recommend that the committee should consider utilizing the P T F I funds. In the upcoming reformulated five year plan to identify true keep the lights on expenses. And make those and other priorities mandatory funding, funding out of the P T F I so that we can ensure that the very basic funding needs. Of the Navajo, Navajo Nation and the chapters have a guaranteed funding source. Um, and I'll go over some of the things I wrote in my email this morning that pertains to this. Uh, the committee should also consider alternative and innovative ways to handle Navajo Nation revenues. And subsequent allocation of funds for operating capital initiatives. There are current best practices based on actual revenues and expenses that the committee should examine with the Navajo Nation Office of Control. That would provide enough revenue for operating and capital expenses, but also to continue growing the Navajos, Navajos financial assets. Um, to clarify what that means is, um, Jeremy Jimmy, the investment manager. Has come to me with a proposal that him and Sovereign Finance are starting to flesh out about how we could um. Rethink the way we use the, the revenues coming into the Navajo Nation. Uh, to fund a, a separate fund that would then, we would use that fund to, to, to. To fund any operating costs within the general fund. The plan is very, very, very. Um, at its start, so I don't have a lot of details, but certainly as we move toward anything like that, we would update the committee. Um. Uh, bureaucratic, the, the Office of Controller further recommends that bureaucratic processes should be revamped to speed up payments and allocated funds to chapters. We should consider placing chapters in the new E R P system to facilitate this process. And lastly, we should reconsider the appropriations act to ensure the efficient, compliant, transparent, and effective flow of funds. With a dedicated funding source. Um, and we asked for any questions. And Madam Chairman Committee, I'll just share some other thoughts that I wrote. Via email this morning to kind of supplement this report. I sent it to. All of the committee members that were on the original email. Um, in particular, what I'd like to talk about is um. Um, two of them that we're making the report. And I wrote further that, um, the Office of Control will recommend that an allocation be made from the permanent trust fund interest. To address the repair and maintenance of our current aging capital asset inventory. A very cursory estimate of this need is roughly sixty million a year, which represents approximately ten percent. Of the depreciated value of our current capital asset audit balance. We think that outsourcing this is a very good position to take. As there are apparent restrictions on the kinds of repair and maintenance that general services can't address currently. Um, so we think that um. A lot of the capital assets on the Navajo Nation that doesn't really address the chapters yet, but just the central government's capital assets are aging and. I think we can all see at some point are deteriorating. And by reconsidering the five year plan and allocating a, a good chunk of money to address that, uh, we would, we would definitely recommend that. Um. A question was asked as a follow up regarding, uh, the keep the lights on, uh. Um, recommendations we made. And this morning I wrote. Um, we believe that the Navajo Nation Office of Controller should formulate a fixed cost definition and plan. We believe fixed cost should include, quote unquote, keep the lights on cost to include, but not be limited to one. Payroll and fringe for essential functions, which we will work with the committee to define, to define what that means later. Any and all utilities to be paid directly by O O C. This includes chapters and the new E R P, our new E R P can facilitate this. We would put all utilities on auto pay arrangement and allocate quarterly. This would include electricity, gas, telephone, utilities, to name a few. We make this suggestion because the Office of Controller has been present at some chapter related meetings. And we're understanding that current chapter allocations are slow to get out. And as a result. Utilities are being shut off by chapter houses. We feel that if we just move that under a fixed cost allocation under the Office of Control, we could just auto pay that. So at least the lights stay on. Um, and we could allocate later. Um, and I think the new E R P system that we're contemplating will help us do this pretty easily. Um, we also recommend that repairs and maintenance should be part of the fee set keep the lights on allocation. Um, as mentioned above, this will be recommended as an allocation from the P T F I. Um. We also think allocations for essentials, essential systems like software and other allocations should be mandatory funding. Um, and then, uh, any rent allocations to keep our services, our essential services open and running. Uh, and then last but not least, uh, we believe that allocations for direct services like. Our scholarship programs, our chapter allocations, and our veterans payments. And any other pass through fact allocations, the key kind of define as allocations that pass through legislation through executive. Um, we believe that those should be a mandatory funding and administered by the Office of the Control to take out the current middleman situation we're in where. A lot of these payments run through another division. Not to point a finger, but just to name D C D. And then it seems like paperwork tends to get hung up between O O C. D C D back to the chapter and the wing system. And then back again, and it just causes unnecessary delays. And we believe that if we. Include that as a mand- mandatory funding effort and give that administration to the Office of the Controller. Um, as I've kind of mentioned to some of you on this panel, on this committee. I mean, with the chapter allocations, we're talking a hundred and ten checks twice a year. That's not. Shouldn't be a big deal. We should just be churning that out. And if legislation is behind it. I don't, we don't see the reason for a, a middleman type arrangement through another division. We could just. Take the allocation, send the checks out and be done with it within twenty four hours of allocation. Um. I conclude that with all of the above, other than payroll can be payments directly from N N O O C. Without the need to run through other program business units. We could create a fixed cost business unit. With uh, the cost mentioned above and have N N O O C as administrative oversight. Everything after that, we would consider discretionary funding such as supplies, travel, non essential payroll. And fringe and all other operating costs would be what the divisions would then go to, to get oversight approval for in their annual budget. This way, we have a mandatory budget amount that we can ensure that all lights. Are kept on, all essential employees are kept employed, and all um. Uh, statutory allocations to direct service, direct uh, benefits to our people like scholarships, veterans. And chapters, just to name three of them, would have a mandatory funding source and O O C could send those checks out without. Our current kind of red tape process. Um. And we also highly recommend that we implement the chapters in the E R P to facilitate that. And also um, work with um, our current uh. E R P system to implement um, easier uh, veteran benefits type plans. Uh, where uh, the Veterans Administration can easy, more, more easily uh, determine. Uh, the payments to which veterans and then O O C can, can send those out. So. Um, with that, uh, Madam Chairman, committee members, that's my report. Um, and whatever questions the committee may have ahead. Thank you, Shana.
Thank you. Michelle, Sean, McCabe, happy birthday to your daughter.
Thank you, Chair.
And then, uh, members of the committee, I know that we have received this report, or the interim report early on, and. Thank you to the members that are um, asking your questions, that email chain. Uh, and I just wanted to, I'll recognize motion for Vice Chair Sider. I just wanted to mention that this is the. Beginning of the discussions uh, that we'll have regarding permanent trust fund interest for the next five year plan. And um, moving forward, I know we'll be to those next steps. Uh, regarding this report, I'll turn the floor over to the members of the committee. So. Uh, second, anyone want second motion, second vice chair, Sharon, and then I'll recognize Sharon and Amber, and then. If you have a question. Okay.
Well, yeah, thank you. Um, I appreciate that the controller responded to. My email. So what I didn't ask in my questions was. We haven't talked or come back to the conversation about this two year budget. And I understand we could use some of these possible um, available funds for debt. But I would want to see first that we move forward with the budget that we are, what is that called? Budget to actual. And so historically, we're running on, let's say, it's two hundred and twenty seven. I, I would just need to know if you could do that analysis so that we can see um. How much we need to have. Because right now, we put aside what, ten percent, right? That's the view of the um, ten percent mandatory. And every time that you say what's available, why do we think it's above that ten percent? And it's my understanding, uh. We can look at that legislation on the purpose of that ten percent. Because it might give us a way legally or a way forward. Um, to move from, and, and changing the appropriation law from, uh, what is that like, uh? I mean, revenue projection, revenue projection to the actual. And what does that look like in those steps? Uh, because we have to do that this year. And I would want to see something like right after we finish the budget season, we should be done. Uh, September, I mean, in October, so could do October, November, December. And have something ready for winter session for the appropriation act. So Chair, I would want to see on all these conversations. More of like an action plan, like who's supposed to do it, when, and um. Because I'm still working on that, uh, public safety fund. And so I, I'm just kind of doing it. However, whenever, but we have other things that the committee has asked for. So I just wanted that follow up. And that could be done, um, updated through, through email. I'm fine with that instead of having to present for. Uh, the committee, uh, but I also like public, um. Conversation. So I'm good either way. Wanted to add um, to our report in future. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Sharon, Sharon, Amber, and I. Um, I will, last night, the, or this evening, the controller and I. Started to hash out some of the discussions about next steps and so, I, I do have. I am still accountable to the budget and finance. At the end of the day, I'm, I'm looking at the controller right now because. We're, we're gonna have to develop that timeline so that we have achievable goals throughout the next six months to December. And potentially, you know, this committee um, enjoys uh, very strong public. So. We're gonna have to develop that timeline so that they can hear the updates, especially when it comes back to sovereign finance and those models that. Are being requested. So thank you, Sharon, Amber, and I. Uh, members of the committee, does anyone else have any questions? All right, last three guys, and I would have done it, Sharon has it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, uh, Controller. We see the presentation. And also to your, uh, chairman, and to your colleagues, it looks like in one of your questions, number three, but it's just, but um. We're always looking forward to advocating on how we might be able to press our, the rest services to our veterans in time of matter. And in there, uh, Controller, your recommendation was moving the image administration, the E R P. And you said that would not be as complicated now. The next question was, but there might be some recommendations for overhanging allocations. Is there a way we should be aware at the beginning stage or how can, starting addressing. Your possible recommendations to, but again, this is the rest services, they, they take. Time to get their, in this process and jits through uh, D C H or some kind of direct method. That would be, where that would be a question, I checked, yeah.
All right, thank you, Deputy Austin, you have a question too?
Yeah. Morning, morning, everybody. Um, thank you for the report. Um, I have a question on memo that you had sent. In the table, there's a section here, revenues over expenses, the P T F I allocation, there's gonna be a projected native to place in a billion. Um, are you gonna tap into that somewhere billion then at this point? Um, so that would be one of my first questions. Um. Then. The other thing is, um, I know, you know, we're showing that in since twenty twenty two. Navajo Nation hasn't tapped into the, I, one million. And is there, I mean, I'm sure these are all kinds of various, but is. Is there a way to tell that it's a statute-like variance? Is it administrative? You know, what are those? And is there a ways to, when, you know, we're talking about appropriations. And we're gonna tackle that. I think that would be important to know. So that way we can kind of see which areas need to change in that appropriations law. Um. Um. And I think probably at this time, we don't have any specific operations, I mean, that we're gonna. Which we, I guess would um, need more. More reports and more meetings as we move forward. And. Um, can these um, P T F Is be used for direct services like. Man water, public safety, elder care, because I know they just invites, you know, experience in meeting with the chapters. Elder care or around these, you know, has lots of these, but and, you know, I'm not familiar with the. The full thing on, you know, it's just a little bit of the information that has been shared with me. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Sharon, and I'll see you with the floor back to Mr. Sharon.
Okay, thank you, Grand Chair Parrish, members of the committee. Uh. Delegate Esther Yazi, sir. Um, so, uh, I've sat in on a couple of meetings now. Um, with delegates regarding the Veterans Trust Fund. I believe we have another one tomorrow. Uh, I know one of the proposals by Delegate, uh, Dr. Andy Mez is to. Um, increase the allocation to the Veterans Trust Fund. Um, and uh, I discussed with them on him. Um, options on how to accomplish increased. Um, allocation to them. Um. So the reason why I make the comment in the email really serves the. Just the anticipation of continuing that discussion of the legislation that Dr. Mez is proposing. Um, I do think there's ways to accomplish um. The um, the increase in funding and therefore benefits to the veterans without tapping into the general fund budget. And one of the ones that we've discussed is utilizing permanent trust fund, that we're really not even using at this point. So we're continuing to hash that out and see how that's gonna work. And I'm glad you're involved with it as well, but. Um, I think as these discussions, including tomorrow's, go forward, you'll, we'll get better answers on how, how, how to allocate. Um, as far as A C H capability, you know. If I had it my way, we wouldn't write a simple check. We would A C H everything. So we're definitely gonna. We're kind of trying to move as much as we can uh, to getting uh, more and more A C H capability under the, the new E R P. Um, a lot of times with individual benefits, though, some of them don't have established bank accounts, so that can be difficult. But we'll figure out a way uh, to those that need it and desire A C H to get that available to them. Um, Delegate Sharon Yazi, if you have anything after the question. Um, you asked about barriers as to whether understanding, understanding. Um, you know, a, a lot of it comes down to our red tape. I mean, you know, which we're trying to fix. Uh, we think we're gonna have a lot of this addressed when the E R P comes online. I will say though, that the primary reason that we don't spend. The actual and allocated revenue is vacancies. We have, uh, we, we carry over a personnel ask on anywhere between thirty five and forty million dollars every year. So vacancies that we budget for, but we never really end up hiring. So. While I do believe there is a need for increase um, personnel. I don't think it's a good practice going forward that we just allocate a huge amount and see whether it happens or not. I think it should be addressed more. Intermittently throughout the budget year through maybe unmet needs request. Uh, that way we get a better look at exactly what the personnel lapse or the personnel need is. Uh, because that is the primary reason why we understand that. Um, and I always have to ask the question like thirty five million new salaries. That's a lot of people. That's about a thousand people. Probably eight hundred people based on an average salary of like fifty thousand and plus fringe. And I always have to ask, like, where, where do we put eight hundred people, you know, I mean. So budgeting for it, I, I, you know, I think we just need to be a little bit more realistic. Um. As far as direct services, um, and you know, Shana, that's the primary reason why I think the committee asked me for this report. Is we're giving you an understanding that there's an entire permanent trust fund interest allocation that we're really not even using. So all of that really is available for um. Allocation somewhere else. Now, the forty million, you'll have to wait till we don't spend any goals in the U U F B, but. The U U F B, I think the last memo Ron put out was around two hundred and eighty three million. So there's. There's a lot of U U F B dollars left over too, as a result of non, non spenditure. Um, so, um. I think the question of the appropriation act, um, and the idea of maybe providing. Uh, amendments to it by winter session, I think is a good one for this committee because. I think there's a lot of unused money that we could. I mean, just to be blunt, if, if, you know, our, our branches aren't gonna spend it, there's more, there's money to do something with. And now that the committee has invited me to. The chapter hearings, which I thought was a great thing, because I don't get to hear the chapters a lot of times from underout and the budget hearings. It's obvious there's a lot of need for direct services and other things and, and, you know, really there's money for it. So I think this committee. Uh, working with the Office of Controller can put together a plan uh, to address things we need. Um. Yeah, because that, there's honestly not a plan anywhere else. So I think we could put something together. Okay, thank you, Chair.
We will be trying to leave, uh, Delegate Sharon, I think the Navajo Nation doesn't know how to budget. Plainly, and in fact, we don't know how to, to budget. We've put so much time into the budget season. And we have no plans to fill it. I mean, plainly, that's why we, we're not utilizing all the money. Where they could be going to figure infrastructure science, where they could be going to um, other. Other services for the nation, but you know, for the, for the appropriators, but we, we have only so much. Discussion about services.
You mean, we're fighting over a budget?
Oh, my God, sense. Oh. What a thought. Otherwise, there would be many questions. Because think about it, like, would you give your, your, would you give your loved one a thousand dollars? But they would pay only time to spend two dollars. Then they have nine hundred dollars on it. Instead of asking for what they need and, and receiving what they need and how much they're gonna spend. We're trying to change the way. Means of not, but many, or some. If you're my friend, you're my shepherd bro. Otherwise, there would be many questions. So you're showing nothing.
Yes, thank you for, um. My answer was those questions for me because, um, yeah, it does just come down to, we're not budgeting, right? We're not. Really, we can get it all the way through. And I know I'm gonna feel like during this, for this reason. Uh, because we're going to have our numbers lower. Um, departments are gonna be, or something, waiting for when that's really also not being used. Which, I do feel like he's the first one to have to tell great areas. Um. So that kind of goes into, you know, and if you'll come to get in front of this, they're on it, like somebody. And said, we won't have to leave them in the administrative processes that's needed. To repurpose that, you know, allocation on a chapter one for the parents, you know, the chapter needs. That's what I'm really, you know, I'm, 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 I'm probably doing a public safety, you know, and getting that association. That was, yeah. Definitely, they, um, that are talking about, um, relation, hopefully, you know, these meetings, I mean, I hope you wanna come. You know, facility replacement and then also. to the facility replacement and then also some stations, those are the you know, especially again, this, I mean, like just the whole nation and the whole world where we have, have these polar opposites and we can't feel something, and then, for me, I feel this, and then you know, our people are saying, and so we have to start thinking about how to use this party for the future. And I think that would be a good start, it's just to really let our local community use their pride and see how they're able to really start getting their infrastructure and provide for their community. So I'm hoping we tackle this this year, and I wanna just leave it if it's gonna be super important again. Those are my comments, but I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and go follow up emails, just so I have it. My seven and a half, thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Sharon Yazi, members of the committee sitting without any questions or comments at this time. But Sharon Cross.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Sharon, thank you, Prawley. Hey, Delegate Yazi, you grasp that, she said. It's not, what are you doing, like it's administrating there, the money coming out of funds and stuff like that, just that we're spending down the dollars that we have on hand first, right, so. That, I, there's something that confused me in the first one. My, my preference would be fifty percent for the certified chapters and like new plans, and then fifty percent either just gets reinvested back into the funded, we're not spending this time. Or fifty percent ends up getting added into the other interesting company, like Citizen, whatever, the master, the vehicle, that construction investments, or if you have a five or ten year plan, it could be like just in your centers, or say, these sort of layers, stuff like that, so. Not necessarily including an annual budget per creation, but having you know, okay, the meat, whatever the debt is for capital stuff, and think about it, so plus each year, especially that. And that we go into all of things that can go just so. Those are kind of my thoughts on this.
All right, thank you, Delegate Sharon Cross, later, members of the committee, listening to that question for control. Delegate, any questions? Delegate, guys, unless you have anything. Delegate Sharon, how's it going? All right, thank you, Controller and Cave, but we do have much in a second on the closing report. Do you have any further questions at this time? We're looking to do a work of the controller on developing some models that we can have conversations about what to kind of begin this. All right, we'll ask a question or a third one.
Sorry, good talk. I'll just pull down the start, hold on. All right, for something, for, for the committee, for the investment committee, I think that if you go back to April ninety-one, fifty, easy contributions. And investment income. I guess just probably, really, it's just contributions that it should support the super budget dollar. And do a counterfactual and say, okay, well, we locked up this money, followed this strategy, this reasonable strategy, there are changes since then. Then how some of these large you got and said, do stuff like this. Remember, we're looking at the last investment we can get, there's some numbers on the left, right? Right, okay. Large university balance, and then also, it's fine about the plan, so the national plan, so whatever. Have much larger asset allocation to private equity, special capital, sorry. Private, private capital. And we are sort of dipping our toe into that, but we essentially said, oh, we're gonna need this income, so we're gonna stay other things. But really, we haven't needed the income, we haven't been using it, with the exception of the first five-year plan. So going forward, it could be important for us to think about, okay. If we're not touching it, we're anticipating not touching the future, blocking up for a bit. Should we change the asset allocation? And can be calculated with that counterfactual might be a translative growth. That, that's my asset control.
All right, good work, Mr. Hape.
Okay, thank you, guys, Chair Slater. No, I think that, that would be useful because the, if the committee recalls, one of the first things we do with the controller's revenue projection is we take twelve percent and put that back to the PTF. So if you recall this year's, yeah, if you recall this year's allocation, the controller's revenue projection is twenty-two hundred and eighty-seven million. So twelve percent is roughly thirty-three million that we put back to the PTF and then just took forty right back. So there's kind of a Peter Paul thing going on between what we're doing. So I just, some of that stuff, we just need to relook at, and I think looking back on the use historically, which we did here, but based on the most recent five-year plan, we can go back further as well.
All right, thank you, Controller and Cave. Yeah, what a useful conversation for the office of President and Vice President to be a part of, are they on the phone? For the record, the office of the President, Vice President, it's not on the phone, there's, there's a bridge. The initial branch is on the phone, Chairman Everk, all right.
Here, and I, and I wanted to actually go into the chapter conversation. Since that's fresh in our minds, and one lead that could forward for setting up those numbers. To get that written out, so there's a few things that I've heard. And I haven't seen anything, but we have speaker staff here. So is there gonna be a title twenty-six reform legislation? Someone has to say yes or no. And the reason why I asked that, Chair, is because we received a copy last week. And there was a discussion about the four proposals, which had been made up with. And what I really came down was are they gonna make a move to make every chapter certified? Why am I saying that? That impacts the five-year plan? Because I'm not supporting a waiver of LGA certified chapters not receiving of funds according to these laws, that's why I need, like, all these laws, and if your team can just help us, like all these laws, all of these laws that have been cast regarding permanent test fund. Would be great. The other area is we need to determine at what point we need to talk about chapters being included into this, the guarantee. Guarantee. And what that loss looks like. Because so much funding has been invested into the full MIT. And there's no documents, this is another kind of contracting, what I'm concerned about. There's no documents where National, where the audit generals, it's on the fall, there's no documents that said, this is a system you should use. And so I want to make sure that that just wasn't someone's handshake or steak dinner on getting those contracts. So I would, Controller, I mean, just if you could while we think about what's a better way for the chapters, if we could just get a little bit of that history. Because I just want to make sure, are we gonna ask chapters then, are you gonna opt in? Is that gonna be a condition of appropriation to get national foundation funds? We're, we're gonna have this conversation and how much not only to implement, but like the whole training and everything, because you mentioned like A C. So A is supposed to be like your technical support teams, but the chapters also go to MIT. And they're spending thousands of dollars on MIT, and so, hey. It doesn't make sense to me. But you mentioned their budgets, like the chapter budgets. And it's very interesting, and I don't know enough, because sometimes chapters are under legislature. And then currently they're under executive. And we don't see their budgets. But oversight doesn't see it, budget and finance council, nobody sees their budgets. All we do is like a worksheet and spreadsheet, right, this is your budget. And so I would need to know then, because what was, I think twenty-six, or maybe it's a bit, requires a capital reservation. And that's where the hang-up two years, like this delay. So I would want to see if we could ask chapters ahead of time. So they're not so that they're able to ask us what they need, but they also have to defend it. And it sounds like the chapters do not want to be all you know, seeing the same way. So there's chapters that are moving forward, I say, why, why don't they benefit from unmet needs or moving projects along and the other projects that are, and the other chapters that are struggling. Then we go to P C D and A S C to say, words, we're liking you, why, why is this chapter struggling? Even if, like, let's say there's nobody working there, I have a chapter that probably has challenges. And I, I am wondering right now, why B S doesn't have a plan to keep that chapter running? But there's, you know, they don't have their two core positions there, so it's kind of a conversation of the local market. I always think maybe the money could be regionalized. And the chapters focus on just providing those for their servicing, so it can move along. But I, I just need to know, like, sort of committee, at what point we need to have that conversation? Or should the budget and finance make some regulations from our public hearings? On how some initial chapter report should happen at height of twenty-six? Based on what we heard with the, of the comments. And, and move that along, so that could be two options, I, I just wanted to just let go on Chair. And as the controller, you know, in terms of that timeline of the portal. I would support it, but I do see is the chapters are being like this grant allocation. But so many of them are relying on one hundred percent of national funds. So, you know, what's their five-year, you know, plan, what's what's their, you know, five things they're gonna do every year? I would want to know through their performance, how many, how many homes have they connected to electricity? How many homes have they connected to water? How many homes have gotten robbed, and you know, all of these conversations, roads, whatnot. Really should be at that chapter level and then they're coming in with executive programs. But I feel like in my experience, it's fallen on those delegates. Like, I'm, I'm constantly having meetings just to get things done. And so I would want to see how the empowered chapters and officials, they're coming and saying these local projects are really, so I would want to use a budget to monitor that. And if that's possible. Because if they don't have the capacity, then could regionalize it. And that's why I'm always asking for a, okay, on the project managers. So I want to see what system out there would work for us. Because people pitch us software all the time, so now they're hearing applications having issues with project management, and of course, they have a software that will solve all of our issues. But I don't know if that would be something that we can incorporate to the ERP, or is that a completely separate system? I'm not an expert in that field, but if you could onboard some kind of portal and it could be all committed in, that would be wonderful. But I would also like to see the future, like all of our case management be incorporated, so we're getting data from this ERP system, not just financial, because we have our money that went directly down to nation programs that are not that, and they're not even on our radar, if they do spend now, there's, you know, millions of dollars that may go to the federal government. And so that would be helpful for me as a legislator, so I'm asking those questions instead of, you know, telling them basically how to do their job, I'm both, that, that has, this system has to change, so I think we're at a place where we can possibly do it. But I want to put all my tricks on this ERP system is if it can't meet the needs of a nation right now. Thank you, Chair.
Again, thank you, Chairman Everk, all right. I tuned up a request from the spending, I pay for, regarding, I'm trying to meet with the research and development committee, this is an urgent distribution fund. This could be another item that we had a discussion regarding chapter reformation, however, I do like your suggestion about formulating a potential memorandum for recommendations collected in the public hearings, so the research development committee, just so that we have we can take the track of the public and raise the, the, the actual questions to the research and development committee, why that decision is important, is it will impact our budget plan, so Mr. McCall, of course. I, I just want to, because he or, oh, sorry, I like run back there. But a decision has to be made. And because it's gonna impact how much money gets distributed and then how much future money can be utilized, otherwise the, the plan is very general. And we can go down that, that road, but I want to mention that, Mr. Taki. That if we get dropped off in the random with the information collective regarding, there was some discussion about regionalization from some members of the public who supported that. And then there was discussions about how there is not enough money for services, like with life edition person. I think we just need to build cost estimate on what that additional person is getting paid at the chapters. And then sort of realization of that budget at the chapter level, of what that's gonna cost addition. Because that could go into the plan, into their distribution for the Veterans Trust Fund. So those are the comments that I'll make now, and then I'll go later into the committee about how you get extensions or to the resource development committee, but especially with that, I don't know. And I don't know, the speaker herself, is this lost about legislation? Otherwise, our condition is that their extension has to, has to be. I, sorry, if you have any comments or?
Thank you, Chair. I'll just touch on some of Chair Prawley's points and questions. So the new ERP system. We've introduced the idea, including the chapters, to the implementation team. And so they're getting this cost estimate now, and there's two options really, and apparently there may be a leave order, I may have to get over, but one, and the way I, I think we should start is implementing the requisition capability at the chapter level. And what that would do is it would, it would give the chapters the ability to requisition payments directly to the office of the controller, because currently and again, none of these points are meant to point fingers, it's just me identifying unnecessary steps. But right now, a budget is given to the O C, it's uploaded by O M B, the F M minus. That then goes to A S C, A S C goes to the W N system, which then gets uploaded to the M I P system by the chapter. And if those don't match, then we have a conversation, what we need to do to fix it. If it doesn't match, it goes back to A S C through W N, back to F M minus over C and O M B. And this is what I commonly refer to, that alphabet soup of bureaucracy, because there's so many O's and C's and D O J's and O M Bs in this process, and if we give the chapters just the requisition capability. They can make the requisition, could request of their allocation straight to us, and we can distribute that money immediately without having to go through all of these steps. And this has to, this also applies, I'm glad Chair Parish mentioned the gaming distribution fund. I was in this very room with a meeting with some Eastern Agency chapters, and they were asking, where's our money? Because our utilities are gonna be shut off. And it's the same thing, A S C was in here, O M B was in here. Chair Prawley, I believe you were there, and you heard the exact what I'm talking about, oh, we had to send it back to O M B. O M B had to send it back to us. Then it had to go back to O M B again, and on May fifth, I sent this email and that email. And everyone points the finger at the controller, and I'm sitting there thinking, I've never even seen it, we haven't even seen it yet, it's still going between. So by giving the chapters the requisition capability, they can put those requests for payments in immediately without having to go through that. After the budgets are uploaded by O M B. Now, we could give them full access, meaning they could replace the M I P system with this one. But apparently there might be a title, something that needs to be amended before, I don't know, Mel's kind of looking into it for me, because I asked him. Can I force the chapters onto our new ERP, and he said, let me take it with that. Um, and then I think he asked me to put in a request through their system. I don't know if he'd done that, you know, get through Rob, but um, anyway, there might be something I have, we have to be first before we move fully into our system. Um, and you guys mentioned chapter resolutions. I, I, I'm not real sure where that's listed, if it's in the pin or in the title, but I, I don't know the need for that really because I mean, if you think about it this way, the navigation is like the federal government giving down grant money to chapters. That's kind of the same way this is. It's not all giving grant money to the local authorities. And I know when we apply for a federal grant, we don't send a council resolution to do something like that. I mean, there's a one sixty four, but so I don't know why we make the chapters do the same thing. And that's something I think we could amend that, that would get rid of. To me, it's the, the council saying, here's what the chapters we're getting. Send it out. It's should be that easy. But it's not, hey, so. Um, project management, I know you keep, uh, asking me about that. There's a couple of reasons. One, I'm not real sure how much I wanna get too much into weeds of what is gonna, the format's gonna take, but, um, uh, definitely gonna try and get something on. And I know you talk about software, well, inside the three sixty five environment we're already in, there's, there's project management capability. In fact, we use one now to keep this E R P implementation in track. It's called Dead Office. It's actually really handy. It sends out emails on decision making. I get an email, I approve it and then you can see who's approving what all along the way. Um, so we may have that capability, at least at some level, very soon with the medium to achieve. Um, and last but not least, you talked about, um, the data. Uh, we had a data breach yesterday, another one. And so I sent out a R F Q today. Um, to get a cybersecurity assessment. We got an email yesterday again. Looked completely legit from one of our employees, email address is asking for bank information to include on upcoming payroll. And the only reason why I flagged it is I know the employee that supposedly came from with signature listed a title that I know that's not the, it listed internal honor. And I know we don't have an internal office, so I sent that to I T. I said, is this right? Is this? And they said, no, that's a spamming. Had I not known, we would have just said, oh yeah, here's the bank information and now someone's got it. So I'm procuring a cybersecurity assessment now. Um, and the data part of it, um, I think moving to the Microsoft cloud and then the A R P will enhance our security. But I do wanna discuss with the committee at some point about a centralized data center here at Nanlo and my plan is the F R F building because it's not being used. And talking with, uh, Lisa, she's saying there's possible legal remedies. So I was like, well, then let's just turn it into a data set. Um, and there's, I'll, I'll come to you with a plan on that. And one of the reasons why I wanna do that is not only data security and sovereignty, but now it gives us A I capability, because if we can consolidate all natural data in one center, now we can start taking advantage of A I in that. I'm not saying we can't do it now, but our data seems to be everywhere. And it's just not very safe. So, uh, that is something I'll be talking to I T and the committee and the council here very shortly. Uh, thank you, Manager.
Alright, thank you. This is what I'm gonna take from the members of the committee, I'm gonna take from the opposite speaker.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, helps the members of the Budget Finance Committee. Uh, in regards to, uh, the Title twenty six amendments are being proposed. So the opposite of the speaker, we've been working on it since, uh, last year, last summer. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Roger began with D O J had, uh, presented, um, four options to the Navi K T committee. I can't remember exactly which month, um, where the Navi K T committee had, um, discussed the potential options and to review the options. And I believe, um, at that time, Navi K T, the Navi K T committee had, uh, came to somewhat of a understanding of at least merging two options. And I believe it was options one and option, no, I'm sorry, options two and options four. And so based upon that, um, the office of the speaker and the, uh, and D O J, we did work together. And we did have a proposal. There is a proposal that is available, uh, which was created back, uh, in December. We had legislation ready and available. Um, and Speaker Curly was, uh, prepared to drop the legislations. Uh, but the office of the speaker and, uh, had received notice from uh, Chair Jesus back on December seventeenth requesting, uh, respectfully that Speaker Curly allows R B C to review the matter um, and to drop the legislation. So at that time, Speaker Curly respected the request. Um, and so now the legislation is in the hands of R B C. So there is a, uh, proposed legislation that had been fully drafted, was ready to be presented to, uh, uh, council and the committees. Uh, so, um, Shama, uh, delegate Potty to direct the answer to the question, there is a proposed amendments. And those amendments, it does include, um, the possibility to, um, to allow those chapters that are still considered, um, uh, non-certified to become certified. But again, those are just proposals. It was going to go before council to review the matter. Uh, but they are available, um, budget finance, many members say. Um, definitely I can take this, uh, presentation back to Speaker Curly to review the matter and to, um, again, I think it's also since R D C does have this, uh, legislation available, I think it's in the uh, right means that the budget finance committee, um, revisits this with R B C and we will address it within the opposite of the speaker. And, uh, present this to Speaker Curly.
Or wouldn't West be sponsored?
Or that's not, there's that option, but it is available. We've done the link with, yeah.
There's no legislation, there's no one sponsoring it. It's just a draft.
It's draft. We have it available.
At least chapters should know what's going on. Because if they go inside them again, what's gonna happen? We go inside other chapters again, they're gonna tell us that we're making decision without that is unknown. And that's not a bad. So I'd like to see the, the legislation so I can share with my chapters, make it.
Alright, I, I recall at least the, um, Department of Justice. They did a presentation at the agency council on the proposed amendments. I know the resource development committee did a public hearing on the proposed draft that statement, so. But they could have our claimation shared, I'll listen if it's to me that corresponded, um, but in regards to the report, I, I just, I just wanna say though, that it's currently not a legislation and how this sponsor of that legislation approaches it, it does matter. It should go after the chapters, it should, they, they should do that. But what I see right now is that nobody's doing that. Nobody is educating their chapters. Nobody is working with the council to communicate that. Nobody. Not resource development, not the speaker, nobody's doing that. Even budget finance is not doing that. So that's, that's a concern because if in our timeframe, budget finance is committee is asking us to put together a timeframe for the permanent trust fund income, and that's what we're talking about today. And we can't have a answer for us to go back out to the chapters that they are certified by chapters, you're gonna definitely get this much money. But then they're gonna be blindsided by that legislation to say everybody has to certify it or nobody, we're not committing opposition to this council or nothing, you know, like there's uncertainty about that, but there has to be something firm built right now in a direction that we're gonna move regarding chapters. Does anyone else have a question? So I know we're probably gonna, gonna go speak, go talk to the speaker, um, but I mean, how the committee, uh, we can to that first one, we used to the resource development committee, uh, speaking, reflecting upon them that we need that information for the permanent trust fund in discussion. Here we'll talk about savings, but there's still time. Alright, we'll get it to us. And then, uh, members of the committee, is anyone else have any question for John? Alright, there is a big question second on this per court today. So back here, I'm really questioning this committee, the, I'm gonna be gay, I vote. Thank you. Great. Alright, we got, yeah, five members of the committee who goes myself on voting. The motion does, please. Colonel, maybe the reason why the budget is financed because of the top of the draft legislation and then if this speaker has time, he can not, he can have a discussion, but otherwise, uh, to hear that.
Yes. And then to make it, can I also ask that auditor general or some questions? Did, did that office, um, have a response to the question? So auditor general. I would have to wait for that about chapters. Uh, the memo that Sean sent out for the next one.
No, wait, you could ask them.
Yeah, so it's a separate memo. Yeah, okay. And we need to send that up.
So she said.
Now, if anybody sent, you know, the, and the control was, she said, the directions and they did respond back to our real practice. This isn't the counter invite, so. Yes.
Mister Rodney Tahi and then Mister Jones from the office of the auditor general, if you can just provide her, or Mister Jones, the person who provided the response to the number and the fact of it. Uh, because that's a, well, it's on the game, it's a shot on us. So, uh, the third chapter and the issues, so this, do you jump, anyone calling? Miss Jones, you're the office of the auditor general.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning. Uh, could you give back to the budget finance committee regarding the permanent trust fund income? And I did see your replies from the email, but did you miss, uh, format and remembering the facts of the committee?
Yes, I responded to the question that, um, Amber, Honorable Amber Crotty sent, so. I sent it to Rodney Tahi.
Yeah, yeah, that was submitted, but could you send a formal on random with your recommendations regarding chapter audits and chapter budgets?
Um, was that part of the questions? I didn't see any questions on that.
No, that's I'll send it, I'll send it email, our workers are talking on that, but we have been asking for uh, specifications on chapter audits regarding their, uh, corrective action plans and build out of that. I know this year we too have integrated the comprehensive budget, but that requires a plan for the auditor general to, uh, develop either cross sharing or other mechanisms of working on the chapter regarding their audit. So, um, maybe it, maybe, oh, for Mr. Tahi to work on that request and then go back to the thing.
Just, um, are chapters required to have three quotes if it's under fifty thousand?
Okay, um, Mister Nate Johnson, while we're in this meeting, our words and, um, our legislation, the question was do the chapters, are they required to have three quotes, um, regarding any, um, procurement? Are they required to have three quotes under fifty thousand dollars?
Yes, yes.
Where, where's that?
So it's not actually written, but, um, we, we require three quotes.
Then there's no law that states that they have to have three quotes under fifty thousand dollars, but you're making that requirement.
Yes.
Where in your authorities does it say that you can do that?
Let me see.
No, they're making vouchers with their, they're making them get three quotes for like a hundred dollars. Oh, that's mad, yeah. Oh, yeah, he's mad. He's one of all these.
And A S C is the as well, is the auditor general has it ready to do, they have taken chapters.
Ever seen that? Chapters that are in correspondence to one way.
Sure, um, I don't know what specific, um, authority the, uh, auditor general or the office of the auditor general relies on to come up with that determination, um. Now, if you're looking out there, I think this is something that, um, maybe we wanna discuss and know the also the auditor general, Neil advisor is the office of legislative council because they're in a legislative branch. Um, one thing that might be happening is that, um, they might be employing, uh, auditing standards, best practices. But it's a concern that our procurement acts and regs don't have that. Like, how would I know if I'm in the chapter? And I'm doing my job and I'm looking at the regs and the code and whatever their values is there, how would I know what the auditing best practices are? I wouldn't know. So, uh, I, do you think that's a concern? Um. Okay, um, thank you. And for the record, that please. I'm glad these questions are being saved for the records and for those listening online. Uh, what we're gonna do is take the paper there. So Mister E Jones, just, uh, look up your emails, go reel in Mister Feldroos and also Mister Phil and Noel. And, uh, maybe Mister Tapi, you could just email the auditor general's office, um, office of legislative council, okay? Uh, on this specific topic, so they just have a conversation about, um, somebody can send them or their partners, department addresses or offices, have some impact on that determination. Because there's no, if anybody can cite the law, that would be great. Otherwise, it'll go back to this knowledge generation, but great questions. Mister, well, we get some of my management policy speakers.
Some of them.
Yeah.
Some of them not.
Yes. No, they persist in my chapters with five inch. It is, we'll revisit that. Alright.
But it's not like off the viewer.
Alright, my first word, then we're gonna go to our legislation. Mister Jones, are your office is keeping track of the five management systems that we have. That we get to know the auditor general's office, so the trends of her fifth of that energy, so. Alright, good, that, we're getting here on seven new business, this is probably a period that was completely to the record. Are you alright?
And now, chairs of the budget finance committee, you have a some of your super legislation numbers, zero, five, zero, dash, two, five, eight. April tenth, two thousand twenty five, regarding the act of the health education. The law order to manage that, the budget finance committee, the deputy committee, and then we do councilman, a manual effective date of that which council for the issue number C O, dash, twenty seven, that from May five, twenty four. The purpose of this legislation is to relay the fact that the number zero, dash, forty seven, dash, twenty four. That is council's by the order of the legislation, we read it to the record to the entirety of the primary's wealth on this legislation is on all, all state or you have passed the first report, legislative branch, internet release of the legislation, number five, two, five, twenty four. Our slater's legislation was close on April tenth, two thousand twenty five, six, twenty seven, end Monday, January eighth, on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, we've been applying for legislation, on constitutional legislation, is the monitoring of the legislation. Then you have in fact, the committee report on health education, we deserve this community, or one of few passed with the members with the Then, yeah, in fact, the committee report on health education, we deserve this committee, or one of few passed with the amendments, with the vote five, in favors or opposing. And, chair not voting, you have the practice law order committee, committee report, for legislation number zero, zero, five, zero, dash, two, five, there are clear reports of few passed with the amendments, with a vote of three favor, and two not voting. Then you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero, one, zero, dash, two, five, date, May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, had the resolution and accolade to the resource development, and budget finance committee, including a project change of resolution number C A P, dash, thirty-five, dash, eighteen, except the D, project seven, or four, nine, nine, that chapter project, the purpose of this, proposed resolution is to improve the project changes, and the solution C A P, dash, thirty-five, dash, eighteen, primary sponsor on this legislation is on, or, if he has, goes down, on, on, the show, and follow us later. For, reading rule nine, and for now, we can also move the order, rule nine legislation, and zero, zero, one, zero, dash, two, five, had it written to the record by electronic voice reporting.
Motion.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tawney, motion by a vice chair, and I'm sorry, it's very exciting to, to the motion on one. Second, by delegate, unless you're asking, are there any, any questions on, oh, we're gonna go to a vote, on the consent agenda, delegate, I'm gonna be gay, how do you vote? Is that, you don't need, in the game of screen, delegate, Sharon, Tawney, how do you vote? Delegate, Sharon, how's he vote screen, Sharon, when Amber, Chris, or how do you vote? Okay, should I, Sharon, Amber, Chris, or how do you vote screen, delegate, Lester, how's he, how do you vote?
I'm sure I will bring.
Delegate, Lester, you guys, you vote screen, Vice Chairman, Paul, said, how do you vote?
Great.
Vice Chairman, Paul, said, vote screen, five members voting, in affirmative, zero votes, myself not voting, the motion does carry on with consent agenda. Next members of the committee, you'll vote to legislation zero, zero, eight, zero, zero, nine, eight, two, five. Uh, Mr. Tawney, with this, electronic, we'll go into the record. Alright, Mr. Tawney, I believe the final authority is the Navo Asian Council, so, we can through this title.
I'm out of the chair, with the budget finance committee, I'm lucky, I did some issue track, for number zero, zero, nine, eight, that, two, five, date, May thirty, that, from the five sides of the resolution, and actually, including the budget finance committee, now, the committee, now, the issue, council approved, we, one, like, eight hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven, one hundred percent, understanding, and five thousand, in the Navo Asian Biology Center, to find its unmet needs for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The purpose of this resolution is to approve one, like, eight hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred sixty-seven, from the other sort of understanding, and five thousand, for that, now, by the Food Lab Center, to find its unmet needs for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, now, the issue, council, as final authority of your legislation, which we write into this record. Then we have a practice for first report for legislative, branch, and a public review summary for legislation numbers, zero, zero, nine, eight, that, two, five, this legislation was closed on May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, to eight, eleven, PM, the five day conference period, and on June third, two thousand twenty-five, was no comment supporting this legislation, no comment opposing this legislation, no comment recommending this honest legislation. Madam Chair, with budget finance committee, that is legislation, zero, zero, nine, eight, that, two, five, nine, the record.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Tawney, I believe it went past the members of the committee that asked for an expenditure report, uh, Vice Chairman, how's that, do you have that information?
Uh, no.
Okay, I just wanted to keep, uh, opposite of controller on, uh, online, any, is this, or? Alright, did you get the expenditure report, generally, I think the process is very good, this is essentially the legislative, or no, I was acknowledging, sorry, that's, uh, the first of all. Any controller, alright, members of committees, your motion on the floor, to consider this suggestion. Motion by, delegate, Sharon, how do you, members of the committees, are standing to the motion on the floor? Standing by, delegate, Lester, how's he, alright, members of the, any, your presentation today? Alright, Vice Chairman, Paul, said, what is yours?
Thank you, should there's your chair, Parrish, uh, my name's Carl Slater, member of your committee, and I bring legislation ninety-eight, twenty-five to you. I have two agents, I'll let them introduce themselves, and then I'll go back and start the presentation, so, Dale.
Good afternoon, Sharon, and members of the committee and chair Parrish, we for having us, um, Jay Dale, uh, Yasi, it's, um, the name of, if the chief, we saw, if she was, she was, she was, and, my age, she's in, and I, but, um, my, my, we're here, I do center team. And I'm originally from Pope, uh, Arizona, and, and Shama, and here, and Sammy's, I, I delegated for our chairman, so, and then, I'm ready, Mr. Gary, we can see here, and, so, thanks for your friend, and, uh, my colleague, Mr. Lewis, introduce himself.
Uh, good morning, Ben, to the finance committee, thank you, Mr. Uh, Delegate Slater, uh, thank you for hearing our legislation, my name is Ansel Willis, senior program project specialist with, uh, Navo Epi Center. Uh, and, like, what is cheating effect, uh? Oh, my gosh. Just not skating, I'm sorry, and I'm from paid, it can't even make it better, thank you.
Yes, um, legislation ninety-eight, twenty-five will make an allocation to the Navo Epi Center, and the primary focus of this is for a cloud-based computing system that will do disease surveillance tracking on the Navo Nation, so, was it in twenty-one, or was it in twenty that you received the grant for the initial system? Um, in twenty-one, so in twenty-twenty-one, there are federal funds made available, um, under the COVID response for the program to, uh, obtain this software and develop this capability. Everything that you write now is basically through spreadsheets and just manual tracking, manually pulling data from different sources, so there's no, plugins, there's no data bridges to transfer data efficiently between different entities that collect public health and disease data. And we use that to monitor, I think, R S V, COVID, and maybe flu. So, we didn't have the full capabilities that the software allows for different aspects, and Navo Epi has been tasked by, I know it's an action plan and other entities to, provide services and resources for implementation of that, and that expands the scope to, uh, I think, you know, violent crimes, sexual crimes, um, suicide, um, other aspects of public health data that are relevant to the nation, trying to address trauma in our communities. That's one aspect of this, and then, of course, there's the natural aspect of, um, the regular, I'd say, disease, the, the, the infections and those things that the program is tasked with, identifying, monitoring, and, you know, advising us on how to respond to these things in terms of policies that we need to enact for our people. So, that software was set to expire in August, and I was approached by the program about trying to get this included in the comprehensive budget and figuring out, you know, how we could move this forward so that we can continue to have access to this platform and really, level up and increase our capabilities, um, from, you know, an epidemiological perspective. And we got the budget forms together, I mean, it was not included in the comprehensive fiscal year twenty-five budget, and it sounds like there's an update now in talking with the vendor, so, I'll have the, the program staff and leadership provide an update on that, but also talk through some of the details, um, you know, why this is needed, and if you recall, in our comprehensive fiscal year twenty-six budget, I asked for a placeholder for this identical amount. And so, I think through discussion and dialogue today, we can get through what the plan of action will be, if this is something we want to see passed in the, in the summer council session, or if we want to commit to, um, evaluating it in the comprehensive fiscal year budget process. So, um, with that, I'm gonna hand it off to Dylan Anslam to provide, you know, further explanation, and any updates on this, I think, there are questions related to staff, too, so that's another item, we just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to allocate money for hiring people when you only have a couple months to do that, um, but, they, they are available to answer any questions, I'm available to answer any questions after you get through with the presentation, so, I'll hand it over to them, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, and I swear, yes, um, I think just a basic idea here is to, um, instructing a data hub for Navo Nation, our epidemiology center within the Department of Health, to be able to conduct disease surveillance activities, collection of data, I mean, if we think about, going back to COVID, um, during the pandemic, you know, being tasked to collect the COVID data on a daily basis, and then use that information to inform our leadership, where the cases are, turning, or the hotspots, how many cases today, how many died today, et cetera. So, as you go in during those times, we definitely have this, um, the data hub, or even the subject that Shama, I'm sorry, you mentioned, being going back and thinking about those points, there were a lot of challenges and gaps, but we identified, and now, post, and then, going forward, we're trying to address some of the, the, the challenges and the gaps that we face then, and one of them is having a data that is, um, where the data will store. And, uh, the key part to this is having the capacity to just not store data, but the data is stored and secured by, whether you're simple compliance, um, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, we are aiming to, build this platform, and holders do all these activities, and also to conduct, um, the analytics within the platform, and the generation of reporting or reports coming from this platform. And as mentioned, even during control and the cave, you know, data comes from different places, and they're stored at other places. And, you know, the idea for data really to come to a central place, or be a repository center, which this platform will allow us to have that capability, and, and with a set contractor that we're engaged with currently, is allowing us to, to begin to do some of these activities within the platform, so, um, and then, just one, my last point will be, you know, there's, um, divisional tasks that are, have come about with, for our ED center, and Shama, um, honorable guy here, and then, there's, um, Cheryl, the Gazi, you know, did that, with the action plan, um, group, and with the four monsters that you're addressing, which are suicide, violence, substance abuse, and missing and murdered in their relatives, and the, the data support for that, you know, the data collection, working with various, um, partners to compile that information, and again, to be able to, store it within this platform is something that is, is more, uh, easily been added to our, our, um, projects within our center, so, you know, just thinking about those things to, um, going forward, to have that information, and be able to, know, our partners, you know, use the data, you know, the information for, for their, um, activities, so. That's, uh, where we're coming from, the base, so, I'll stop.
Are you done? Um, so, conclusion, this is something where we have a version of the platform, right now, we want to expand the capabilities of it in terms of the different, um, surveillance, monitoring aspects that are available in the data analysis that can be done with it. It's a HIPAA compliant system, in order to apply, to comply with HIPAA right now, you know, they have to manually, get, I think, spreadsheets from IT, pull it out, work in a secure environment, and then put it back into that secure, I would say vault, for lack of a better term, which is not an efficient use of our resources and time. Something that we can have credential and access to within a HIPAA compliant system, and I think, you know, these ongoing operating costs are something that should be borne by the nation, um. While it'd be ideal to receive U.S. Health and Human Services funding for this, um, I went to DC a couple times, tried to push for any sort of advisement they could provide us on external funding sources that are available to us right now. There might be something in the future that could assist, I'm guessing, with like technical expertise, or like data bridges, and working with some of the partner institutions, so if you have like a six thirty-eight system, IHS, things like that. That might be possible, but they're not going to fund this going forward, so, I think we're aware of the current budget environment at, um, IHS, at HHS, at CDC, particularly at CDC, kind of coming under attack right now. Uh, there aren't increased in new funding opportunities from the Fed, from the feds, and the existing ones don't cover the cost of it, you know, this is a one-time shot in the arms of the nation under the COVID response from the federal government. And now that we have it, we should expand it and use it for the benefit of our people. Um, and then I'll just point to this page, I think it's like the fourth to last one. Third to last one, this does like the year-by-year breakdown, I think, that shows, um, what the different contributions are to driving this cost, and then, of course, you have your ordinary budget sheets that you all are familiar with reviewing, that covers staff and other items, so, Chair, I'd like to end our presentation on this, and, um, go to any questions that the committee has.
Thank you, Vice Chairman, Paul Slater, and thank you to members of the Biology Center, uh, be prepared to, uh, members of the, others, question? The gentleman, everybody, I'm proud of this.
Uh, yes, I appreciate it, thank you, uh, yeah, so, um, I, I, I don't have his going to report, but that would be nice, that, that we could have, whenever we get a funding request from the entity that would be, uh, managing those funds, that we have an idea of their, their expenditures. Uh, the second, uh, so that should come in, and the point is, is it a C, they don't see that, they're, oh, we understand that there's a bit of an adjustment. So, uh, this has been taken, the control sent out a memo, and, uh, number three, has this been addressed? Uh, budget attached states operational expenses. So, we can, yes, um. And personnel for four, twenty, the attached job, you have to tell a budget for five-year contract, under contractual, so, the, 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 is funded is for one fiscal year, uh, two thousand, maybe, beta alberts, this request seems to be a project cost for Epidemiology Center. I don't see, um, any response or update, so I would need, uh, a sponsor that needs it to clarify, because when I'm looking at the budget forms, on exhibit B, I didn't see on page one of five, uh, in addition to four personnel positions, uh, I'm just a sponsor, I would ask for an amendment, Miss Val, if we can, um, look at language that we're moving the personnel expense from this legislation, uh, because it looks like the extent right now is for the full fiscal year. And, um, and there's not, I don't know how many hours I'm looking at this one year, but there's no appropriated numbers, I'm looking at eight, three, and five, and so you voted it for a full fiscal year. Um, so I would ask for that to be removed, uh, so that would be the personality, that's only one thousand, and I would need to know, um, my question was on the non-capital assets. Are these, would you, is this for new staff, the new staff that you're proposing, uh, because I mean, I would, in that amendment, it would remove that request for staff. And looking at the contract, and looking at the amount, um. So this would just be one, one payment of the one point three million, I'm speaking of this for years, like, what can be done, what can be paid by invoice? Because we all know Justin Jones has told Nat completion to pay our bills, so, if, can we pay this amount by then, when, if this is approved at council, so we have another month before council, whatever internal, can this contract, like, what's the viability of this contract going through, and what's the plan to get this there, um, would be, I don't know. I lost count of how many questions that is, and I wanted to ask then, is your insurance premium based off of your employees, if I'm looking at them now? Looks like it's off, oh, it's a policy payment, seven, seven, six, five, it's for that four hundred and ten thousand. I'm, I'm kind of confused, so, you know, that is much for four hundred and ten thousand, and the workman pump is for, I guess that's the base now for personnel, I don't know enough, but, there's. I'm kind of confused, so you know that is much for four hundred and ten thousand. And the workman comp is for. I guess that's the base now for personnel, I don't know enough. But just help me, is that for the new staff, because that may not be needed? And I just want to focus then on the contract, if we could get it there and lock in, um. So, you know, we don't have to wait, we're the budget process, I support that. I would want to know for this contractual service. May, may recite, like if it went through our procurement process. Or is this just like a contract modification? And in this contract, because of all how the data is. Like, I would want to see, I don't know, is it API, they're supposed to acknowledge. Where, how they communicate with each other. Compatibility, but has that been thought about, because programs is working silos. And we're trying to do this, the action plan is to have as much collaboration as possible. So if I can just get that in layman's terms, I would not object, because I'm worried a lot, we're trying to do the N of the our database. Out of, um, NQ, and, and so we're kind of, we want to also make sure that that information is compatible. And doesn't any chance this system and not like a duplication or, um. You know, what, what being provided there and. Oh, I, that's the control that's back in, um. Was this, is this, could be F R F, this contract? And so Controller, um. You reviewed this legislation, cheers, can you just let me know if, um, if I could just ask that you give it a review? Um, and that can be part of our discussion maybe tomorrow at our leadership meeting, if this is an eligible product. Project, thank you. Doing your job, Vice Chair, but it's okay, I know you don't need no money.
Uh, and I just want to make sure that we're talking about, I just sent the email to the budget, I am, is this regarding? This is seen as K two zero zero five one zero one.
Oh yeah, that's an external, oh, you mean that for charging for Navisite? Do you know? Can you guys look that up and, I, I think they're, they need to find it. Alright, so you are, let me go through these, so we'll answer, answer first for that.
Uh, Chair, this is, this is actually an external contract, or external grant that will expire soon, so again.
But, but is it that, is that the K member?
Yes, that's the security account that we use, that is currently charged right now.
And that's why you're spending a lot of pressure.
Yes.
So. We want to end this very. So, uh, the committee, you do have the K and how much they spend a tree from their initial funding, which was F R F, I think, first or. It wasn't our funding initially.
Well, it cares too. I think it cares too, potentially, no, because of this impact one.
Down the line of questions and.
I understand, sure.
So the committee goes. You know, they are spending the money, according to the report.
Does that endorsement for Mr. Jones?
You need to know what that's on.
What funding is it?
Oh, if it's K, it's.
Oh, kind of, is it cares, is it ARPA, is it?
But it wasn't, I mean, it was an external one that went to them, it wasn't part of the general allocation to the nation where we gave them some of it. So you know how like F R F had non, sorry, ARPA, ARPA had non-F R F funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like that.
Okay. All right, control, you keep, you keep for a, consider if this may be as well. So we already asked that, that's like.
But let me figure it out.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair, I guess, um, starting from Deli Cry's last question. If you go to the total amount for the personnel. Plus the fringe, that's how you get to the four hundred ten thousand seventy-eight, I think, no, four hundred ten thousand seventy-four. And then that's the calculation for the policy payment and the workers' comp stuff, you know, that's minus the fringe benefits. And so, th- that is how they calculated that for that section, you're exactly right, that. Those special transactions for seventy-seven, ten are directly related to the four personnel positions. Um. I remember asking Mr. Lewis about Navisite. And requesting the procurement documents to make sure that it was procured appropriately, and I reviewed them in the word.
All of the conversation besides the swat, please, um, please go to outside areas, thank you.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair Protem. Um, I, I did review the procurement documents, I know Mr. Lewis has them, and I'll ask him right now to send them over to you, um, to review at your. At your leisure, for the expenditure plan and obligation, I'm like getting this done, I'll hand it over to them in a moment. Um, and then I think. I guess, I, I want, I think we want feedback from the program, and maybe we have to just pen to like. Table this per se for, for at least a day. Because that would be super ideal if we're gonna have unspent F R F dollars that we could transfer to cover this. Um. Okay, and it's K two zero zero five one zero one. So the COVID nineteen grant, but it doesn't say like which, which bill it came from and all that sort of stuff. Um. And you guys don't have a. Actually, um, budget balance, okay, so there's, there still is my, I assume most of that's still the contract, yeah, okay. So it's like they have about three hundred thousand dollars left in the contract. Um, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention something that I really want you to follow up in it, but. It sounds like they spoke with the vendor and the vendor may be able to wait until November for payment, but. Um. In responding to Deli Cry and the committee's questions related to interconnection linkages. You know, having the API set up on each side to the, you know, UNHS and communicate with the system, and IHS and communicate with the system, and. You know, what have you, um, it'd be good if you could speak to that, and whether this is the appropriate. Technology for us to continue with, is there. Uh, essentially advice towards it, because we've built up infrastructure into it, and so it makes sense to maintain that because of the investments you already made. Can you talk to those things, and then. Um, okay, you mentioned the expenditure report. The plan for expenditure, I guess, just to chart out a few different options. Um. Ignoring F R F funds that may become available because the programs are not going to be able to spend them and transferring and obligating to this. I think that's one opportunity to do that, and then focus on funding the staff in the fiscal year. Twenty-six budget, so we would reduce the placeholder that's in there right now. Because we'd be able to obligate this one point three eight or so. To the contracts that does get obligated over the, the five years, and then in five years, we'll have to remember that we have to fund this again. Um, for these ongoing operations. And then second, um, an option would be that. We fund with general funds the contract and just get that taken care of this year, but it has to be done and obligated by September thirtieth. Or, and third option would be, we punt both the operational and personnel expenses plus. The expenditure, the expenses for, um, obligation to the Navisite contract. You know, to start on October one, we would include it in the annual fiscal year budget, then you do a full year to do everything that you need to do. In terms of ongoing operational and personnel expenses. Obviously, they're not going to be the laptops and desktops every year. Um, and we'll probably get an operational thing there, but that's where I was pointing out on that page where it shows you. The one point three eight three is going to be toward the contract, and then. The two thousand eighty-eight hours, that's going to be our anticipated cost every year to cover. These, um, epidemiological, epidemiology staff, so I hope that provides some clarity. And I think at this point, because, you know, say the earliest, if, if we were going to appropriate just this legislation as is, it'd be. The summer session, so that would be, you know, if the president doesn't sign legislation until August. When we pass it, you know, the last day of summer session. They got August and September to hire and get everyone in the system, which is a super compressed timeframe, so. Recognizing those realities and just when the legislation came to be, I just want to chart out those few different options for everyone. And ask the program to confirm some of the details, then provide further explanation to Deli Cry's question, so. And so, Michelle, hand it over to you.
Uh, Chair, can I answer some of my questions from Delegate Cry? So to give a little background on the Navisite contract, um. As delegates later said that, you know, we did talk to the vendor, and then he said that they're willing to wait till November. Um, to wait for this contract to go into place, obviously, as we all know, the. The one sixty-four process would be just the route to go on this, um. And then with the new contract that we're trying to place, obviously, it's more than twenty percent of the, of the original cost. So in theory, we would, we need to rebid it out, but again, I strongly believe that we can go through a sole source. Contributing on this, it's, we already have this contract in place as well as. Uh, all the systems that we do have, the data that we have stored there. It would just transfer into the building blocks that we try to do as well, unless. We rebid it out, that data, that is lost. All we're gonna be getting back is, is a security mount, but again, like I said, if we can get through a sole source. And just continue this contract with the vendors, we'll keep all the data and everything that's stored there already. Uh. On the other thing, again, uh, the personnel projected costs, again, as delegates later said. Um. If this is going to go for FY twenty-five, um, again, it would only qualify for two months. So roughly around eight hundred hours per se. Uh, again, it would be. A safe point is to try to push the personnel there, so again. Uh, but I think the main thing that here is that, like I said, the vendor is willing to wait till November. If it goes a different route with the FY twenty-six conference budget, uh, which is a good thing for us with the vendor. Uh, I don't know, Dallas, would you be just, but. Thank you.
I, I just want to talk about the procurement, I mean. We're, we're appropriating, we're not committing to anyone, we have, we have an understanding of what the. Costs are for a system like this based off the experience of working with this company, but. You, you guys are gonna have to do whatever the appropriate procurement process is, and, and the committee is not saying we're going with that, so. There's a few different things, right, there's the, the cost feasibility analysis, that's called. You know, that needs to be done, because in twenty twenty-one, that wasn't being done, we didn't have control in the cave there, no one was enforcing that, this was done with federal dollars. You know, we need to make sure if. They end up winning the bid or whatever, you know, we're not getting ripped off. Uh, just for the committee, I want to say, we, we can keep our attention to this and follow this in terms of procurement. You know, there's a way of writing an RFP to ensure that existing data has to be integrated and that cost is, is included in whatever. The responses are, you know, the proposals are back to the nation. You know, there, there are ways to ensure there's continuity with the, the work that's been done and doing. You know, if it is new system or maintaining existing system, the important fact is that we have a system that is good for us. Um, but do you want to talk about some of the work you've been doing with meeting with the entities to have the connections into our system?
Yeah, so part of the ongoing work we're doing apparently. Is we're engaging with IHS. Um, the six thirty facilities. To. Build these. Um, bridges. Uh, so that is IT terms. I'm not an IT person, but we have an IT team that's helping us, um, right now, we're. Really engaged with Uton Navo. Uh, health system to do this, uh, data linkage. And finding ways to, to do it in an automated fashion. And that it is shared with us in a timely manner as well. We're now, you know, we're talking about. Some of the infectious disease pathogens. Such as, you know, you know, measles, COVID, you know, flu, RSV. Um, trying to prepare for this coming winter season to capture that information. So that we can be informed about these cases on Navination. To do, you know, some reporting, do some trends, and there's some also potentially some forecasting. And model infectious disease modeling more, and the idea behind this all. Activity that we're doing with Uton Navo. And. The other idea is to make this model that we're. Engaged with or crafting with Uton Navo. And translate this to other six thirty facilities or even IHS. Um. The challenge that we're anticipating is that some of these facilities. Have different electronic health records. But for us, but Uton Navo has ethnic tracks, they call it ethnic tracks. Uh, Tuhan has ultras or ulcers. And San Memorial has medit. So they have different platforms, and we're looking to find ways to, um. Figure things out to make these automated data languages. To happen going forward, so. Six thirty, we're aiming to engage each facility. There are eight of them here, um, for, for Navo. Um. And then, of course, the regular five federal IHS sites. Are engaging, look, we're looking to engage them as well, in doing these data linkages, so. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but we're, um, uh, looking to make it happen. Um, so maybe. I don't know, I give it, maybe a year, a year sometimes, to. So to make it happen, so. That's something that was. Or, or do you mind, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair, I think just the last thing I'd say. In terms of the requests that Deli Cry made in revising the budgets. Uh, if the committee thinks it makes sense to make the legislation forward. I, I would happily accept, uh, moving out of committee with a directive to the program. And we could go in and. Remove the personnel aspects of the budget and maintain the appropriation for the software system. Um, you want to keep in the. The computer stuff, we could do that, but I think it makes sense to pump that to next year too. Um. I'm just thinking that it would make a little bit more sense to allocate the funding this year. So that we could get as much of the procurement done as possible. And then that would also liberate one point nine million dollars in the fiscal year twenty-six budget. Um, but I'm really open to the committee, if we do this in the fiscal year twenty-six budget, then we're gonna have to do the hiring and the. Procure, well, the procurement could take place. This year. And then once the budget becomes available October one, then they would just obligate from that business unit to the contract. Um. So. I'm just trying to provide the committee options and what your preferences, um. And then in terms of the. Let me, let me see, the. Appropriation, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it, or just make a follow-up, or? Okay, yeah.
Chair, if I may, um, again, the, the question about the gate count, where it came from, this is a COVID nineteen grant from IHS. So this wasn't coming from the Navination, ARPA, or COVID money, this was coming strictly from IHS, just clear that up.
All right, thank you for the responses, Vice Chair, Paul Slater, and members of the Epidemiology Center team. Members of the committee, it looks like we still have some questions regarding the legislation, Delegate Shalina.
Um, any more reading this number's question, um, Delegate, Delegate, so. So, this contract came from spread, came from IHS in. August twenty twenty-two, and it's been expired soon, twenty twenty-one. Um, and this, and my question also go to sustainability. Like the long-term plan for, um, this project, for hiring new musicians. Um. And I see the same that really, we're, we're, um, I also wanted to know if, where, if. Now, if we go back to Saint IHS or Santa or Saint, to be granted to you. And the board just some project, I don't know if that's possible. The other one, today is on data governance, um, so. How is now what if we? So how is Navo Epi ensuring that Navo data is sovereign to you? Well, not do it like how, how like, I don't know if I read that here. It is similar. In a solid key. And then who's going to control the data after? And the whole project, who's along as you're sharing information between the IHS and some of the secret gates? Who's, who has that data? Is it going to be ours? Is it going to be this company? And then the other one would be on public information since this was COVID nineteen grant. I don't know. Because I know when COVID first hit, we didn't have any information whatsoever. And so how are we going to be sharing that information with the community so that it is? You know, either you have to go and look for information or one of the things that I know pledge of action set are those as the suicide prevention. You know, we're asking questions about, you know, how are we going to make and have, you know, suicide prevention? And we haven't had all of the data that was going to be prepared. Yes. IHS has its own six thirty, yeah, and the own. Having those that would help has a set for a set. And then we have a OCP, there will be some data that has really good. So they even have a state that uses the face. From the campaigns, trying to convey that. And when you look at their reports, everybody is saying something different. Nobody's been together. So the other thing I want to see is an MOU with some kind of document that's saying how we're all sharing our data together. They can see that in there. So we'd like to also you know, propose either amendments or directives for you know, quarterly awards. There should be awards. I mean, since you had this grant since twenty twenty two is the worst to show when it's happened since then. And then if you get funded for this and we improve this at council, I think there needs to be some kind of quarterly awards because you're talking about data for the entire Navisite to see something here that everybody that we can all see. I don't want to say they're charged over health data. And then even adding a community benefit where, you know, there's a place for them to see national is easily accessible, you know, for or we talked about our chapters, you know, we want them to add more information. This should also be included there as well to help with, you know, their projects. They have the unhealthy, unhealthy junk food tax. And so that could really help them figure out, you know, some of the ways that they could eat in the Navy using books and others. Another chapter houses. And then I think there should be some type of long term funding transition plan that can be presented back to the project finance committee or the health education services committee. But those are maybe my recommendations, questions, and while your directors are in, as I said, to legislative council. Thank you.
Share the last for those comments. There were some questions directly back to the floor. So you could floor back to sponsor. Oh, I also want to recognize speaker others. So thank you for being here at budget finance. All right. Chair Crosses.
Thank you very much, Shadja. Thank you very much. Delegate Yazi for the questions and the comments on how to devise all this. I think everyone here is in alignment on that. So with respect to external funds, I had challenged them at the beginning, say, you know, why is it not continuing? And that's why I shared that this was a one time shot in the arm related to COVID. And then we both have approached different funders like through CDC and HHS about the potential for external funds. None exists at this time that will cover the cost of the software or the staff. But, you know, it's something that I think we are consistently seeking in the current political and governing situation. It's very difficult to see that becoming available, but you guys are going to monitor, right? If anything comes out. With respect to data sovereignty, I'll hand that over to them and, you know, who controls it? And how to share with the public and the chapters. I guess reflecting on being on Hess during COVID, you know, and working with Dr. Jim a lot at that time. And hearing now a little more of the specific processes that they have to go through, like literally harvesting spreadsheets and things like that. You know, those dashboards, they were paired together. They weren't built with an API, right? It wasn't just stuff getting plugged in. Maybe it was the one master spreadsheet, but it was extremely primitive relative to what the states were able to produce. And the whole point in my mind is that we're funding this so we can do the things that we were just talking about, Delegate Yazi, that will have value to researchers and communities. And I think it will open up a new frontier in how we communicate public health data and, you know, disease surveillance to our people in a way that is intelligible to them. Because, I mean, I look at half the graphs and it takes me like ten minutes to really understand what is going on when you look at some of this national stuff. And then you talked about the different data input or source collection points. The point of having this one is to synthesize and harmonize that data into one place and then vet all of it. So, you know, you make sure you're not getting duplicate things if it's, you know, Delcon and Winslow, right? You could have off reservation, but it could be counted to Winslow Indian Healthcare Facility. You know, is that then getting double counted with something that Delcon reported? Like, those are the sorts of things in the frontier that like we're going to be analyzing and moving toward as they get the staff to like clean up and vet and review all the sorts of data. And community benefits, talk about dashboards, I think. I had never thought about this, but the unhealthy food tax is interesting to see. Oh, within a service unit or if we do have chapter level data to say has anything we've done had an impact on the diabetes prevalence within our community or incidence rate, you know, like that. I know that we've gone up a percentage, I think, since the beginning of this special diabetes program for Indians. So you can say, oh, what would have happened if we hadn't implemented the program? Or maybe that program is not really doing anything. So that's something, you know, we'll get better assessments on, I think, as we get this sort of data. And then in terms of long term funding, I think that is partially in us as leadership. So that's us walking through the two things. So we'll have the two thousand eighty eight hours that we really should commit to funding for four, and then we'll learn over this next year. Ideally, we get all four hired. Is that enough? Is it too much? Do we need to change the composition of those positions? But this is how they've devised it right now. And then every five years, we'll need to commit to paying essentially what the market rate is for this sort of software. We have no idea what that is right now. That one is. Think you can especially talk about the data sovereignty.
Yeah, tactical aspects.
Thank you, Chair, and also.
I'm sorry, I was now I was.
And then again, yeah, as the dates for your questions. As far as, let me please start with potential additional funding from other places. We are currently engaged with a couple of academic institutions regarding a a no for that just came out recently. And two academic institutions, three chapters are to me are the algae centers for funding, if we will be interested in partnering to apply for this no for from coming from Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And its tribes are eligible to apply. But the two academic institutions are Johns Hopkins, Center for Indigenous Health. And also, Erineshon in A U. And we share to be asking if if we're interested in partnering to apply for this existing no for that's currently available. I think the deadline is later this fall to submit a proposal. And so that's one opportunity through the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. A lot of folks that I, that I talk with are now looking for funding through private foundations. Mainly because what the federal government is doing has turned to other grants. And so private foundations are non affected by that. So so Hopkins and AAU are interested in partnering for this revolution. Foundation, I think it's about five hundred thousand a year for three years. This is why I haven't read the whole no for, but that's kind of like the, from what I remember. So that's through the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. I don't think people are very confident in funding from CDC anymore due to what's going on. Where the federal government canceling a lot of the grant proposals or grant funding. So even with an NIH that's a little bit, there's a lot of instability and uncertainty. With a lot of funding that is coming from NIH as well. So and then the data governance and sovereignty. So we have, so we're a part of twelve tribal epicenter. Across the country. And our epicenter, we have a data sharing agreement in place with IHS and six thirty eight. And this is even going back before I've been with epicenter for about eleven years now. So this agreement was made in twenty fourteen, I believe, is the date on it. And it's still in place for to share data with our tribal Navo epicenter. So that's the the main document that is allowing us to engage with IHS and six thirty to share information with. That's also part of the tribal epicenters have this political authority designation. And we're within the Affordable Care Act of twenty ten. And we are, I guess, from a legal standpoint, that's where we are in position to have this political authority. And then another layer over us is the National Department of Health political authority to invest your information from our partners. And now, so that's one way that we have this authority to collect information and have this sovereignty that the data belongs to the tribe. And that's over the ten years, that's that has really is now observed and respected at the state level, federal level. And so that's, they're willing to share information with us and they respect that as they have the laws to attempt. And then, you know, Valius, where you mentioned you know, the dashboarding, the communication with our chapters. If you go to our Navo epicenter website, very cool, that is the one we started crafting a public dashboard. In the simplest version, and it was publicly as it was a public facing dashboard. And if anyone can go, go to it to look at the cases, incidents, mortality, et cetera. And it's changed over time. And now we also crafted a cancer cancer dashboard. And that's also on there. So we're trying and building ways to communicate with our, with the public, our Navo people, who we champion. So our goal is to get to a point where we're able to share other data through a dashboard, for example. But people can go in there and access that information. So that's an ongoing goal that we have. And yeah, as with that, where this BPS and community or criminal investigation. That's also beginning to formalize. And we're beginning to partner and strengthen our partnership with them to share information with us. And they were able to do that suicide tea. Were able to craft that suicide report. The data came from CI, which is it was really nice to see and it was pretty impressive. And then with Dr. Vargas, we're trying to finalize that report and make it available online as well. And so we're also building partnerships and to do some of these data collection and reporting. So I'll start there. Thank you.
And to add more information about the current contract that I have in place, the contract that we have in place is just strictly for COVID nineteen information. So what we're trying to do is expand on that. We're trying to build building blocks again as delegation to incorporate more data, more information from different avenues. Especially, you know, with that initiative that we're trying to do. So again, the current, like I said, the current contract is only for like COVID nineteen information at this point. And again, like you said, our goal is to expand it to receive more data, to store more data. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Chair Crosses. Thank you, members of the epidemiology team, members of the committee. Do you all have any further questions? We wish your. I was giving marks for the speaker. Speaker called me by share all the time. Are you working on those amendments for this committee or? So.
Thank you, Michael Spudgy speaking. I know all this. Thank you, Chair Perez. Thank you, Delegate Yazi. So I did write an email back to Delegate Yazi. I do try to consider one across the amendment. It seems like it's a cross between a condition of appropriation and a legislative concern, which are things that be limited to the comprehensive budget. So what I need to do is go ahead and I need to relook at the appropriation act and see if there are limitations on that authority. And then I can move from there, but I'm going to need some time to consider it. I also talked with some others that also legislative council will be happy to come up with a plan and have something together hopefully on me. Thank you. Let's go to speaker again.
Thank you, Kristen. Over to Director.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Yeah, let's go ahead and just get ready for lobby. And so my follow up question would be, can I get a copy of that twenty fourteen MP data sharing that you have at only six thirty eight in IHS? Start to look at it and see if how that would relate back to her to the action plan. Because I know I'm working on trying to get a table letter from the president's office accordingly. But if this is going to cover that, then, you know, that's not, I don't want to be that, we're just eventing the loyalty on the thing then. The other thing, can you clarify for me, this Affordable Care Act of twenty ten, you said it was gives you the help authority to request information. Is that, let's see, is that like a federal data sharing agreement? Say on that, yes. And then when the information goes to this company, the cloud, do they because I know you said data will belong to tribe, but what about the stuff? That gets collected. Is there, you know, my game to play, so there's difference. Those are the main questions. All right. Thank you. Over to our sponsor and his agents.
Yes, guys.
All right. Thank you, Chair. For happy to share the data sharing agreement of the twenty fourteen version. And then as far as data ownership and the data that exists.
And the, the data that exists on the, on the cloud. Um. That. Oh, and the twenty fourteen. Sorry. The twenty four American, uh. The ACA twenty ten. I can share the. A document for that too. It's under the Indy Healthcare. Let's see, African improvement, improvement, I think, you. It's within that section of the ACA. So with the travel epicenters are identified there, and I'll try to find that. Um, pull that for you. Um, yeah, we have this, um. As far as the, the cloud partnership, what you said, the contractor, now I would say. There's an MOU where it identifies, uh, that the data is, will be, is owned by the. Tribe, the management team. And it will be. If the contract should end, the data is returned to, uh, the management agency.
Oh, that also includes any kind of hard copy as well? If there was any hard copies related to the contractor, then again, like I said. Uh, it's also part of our contract, existing contract. If you, I, I guess, if you want to look through it. It's under six point four ownership return. There is a clause in it that returns all that about to the nation.
Okay, I think it is lost. Uh, two questions. All right, so first, the committee does email some questions to the legislation. Uh, yeah, Delegate Lester Gazi.
No, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. To those who were with and Mr. Yancy, thank you for his presentation. Uh, might would be more of a comment than possibly a question I did, but I appreciate the. Uh. And it does cover the, the so work, the requirements for this, uh, probably can use, uh. Uh, database, and then we can most of the. Yeah. One of the questions that we gave was the one point eight for. What was the, uh, the safety review that I did about that, if you thought the question was. But the one that I, what you can ask was, um. Sorry, and it's J. Form one of five, uh, the actual budget. My question would be if there is any kind of restrictions, you know, swimming into software. And so. It goes, would be, uh, the, the contract services or for special friends, I think. Thank you, when you're surprised. But if you could just, really touch on the medicine, thank you.
Oh. I'll tell you in the specifics, but, um. So Yasi, if you go, uh, if you go into this page, this shows you what the annual costs are going to be, and these are going to be under the contractual services obligated to. Their contract. And so these are some of the line items that are under there. So like the SQL server, you know, that's for. Manipulating the data, all that, or data cleansing. I don't say one of them. Or is that any kind? You guys are going to bring the. The herbs. That was a bad joke. Okay, um, thank you. This is someone else. Okay. But yeah, so these are going to be all the contractual services ones. Uh, and these are the, the one time ones over there, and they'll all, they'll both be under the contract under contractual services. And then I'll hand it to Del with the right. Does that answer your question, or do you want more?
No, I think that. Given me a direction, Vice Chairman, so.
Yeah, so, so those are going to be, if you go to budget forms in three of five. And you, um. I mean, yeah, page three or five on four. Note page four, four of five. Budget form four. That one point three eight three lines up with what's on the bottom of that other breakdown, the year by year. And so that's the five year agreement and includes each items that are required for this sort of deal. So there, the special transactions in this budget. As I said before, those are directly related to the. To the personnel. And so we all agree, take that out if we push it forward at, at Malibu.
All right. Thank you guys. Share. So there are members of the committee, does any else have any question? Well, I'll go to Chairman and Mr. Nasser.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think motion to table. My amendment can remove, um, the product amount will need some additional time of budget terms. So, um, I sponsor, I know we're going to have a discussion tomorrow about that. When it. With somebody like a calendar, but it's some need, that's on the table for next meeting. But this is all my intent. I support the content and just don't give my personnel, the, the, um. Yeah, like you don't have those positions, it sounds like a full process. I mean, we fish, then we could give it a contract, um, and there was a true to be a plan, I would need to know. Uh, you know, assuming that the contractors are put back home, so there was the plan from the department and division. To get this, you know, president, no, we don't know what happens after we pass the resolution. But I like, um, delegate. From the Yancy suggestion is, as a committee, every time we pass a U F B request, we're going to ask how you spend that money. And what we're seeing are some programs will ask for money and then spend it somewhere else. So, uh, that's also some work and pushing on. On the control, and it's not to Michael Mann, it's just to say, let's be honest for the money that we're asking for. So that we can always support and make sure that it's like this in the future, right? We want to support things. Um, because that's going to be my request right now. Uh, Chair and Staff, we must know the next budget of finance, uh, meeting, and that will, uh, simplify motion.
No, I'm not supposed to.
All right. The next budget finance committee meeting may take those to a conference of budget here. For all the schools office comments, then.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, what we did want to mention is the procedures that are thoroughly drafted. Um, it has. The. Budget session limited to just budget legislations, but if you'll recall. You all did make an amendment to that last year, so, um, and you made that, you're made that same amendment. It will open it up for inclusion somewhere next week, Chair.
They don't fit time.
Yeah.
I don't want to have it come back and then she's still researching.
Is the budget. Such a station. We're very, very good at the discussion.
Also, you got.
Right, other procedures, yes, the procedures have been dropped. There must be an announcement. That we're still waiting on a few budgets, including the opposite of controllers budget.
It's happening. You, you forgot.
I did remind him last week if he said that, but as we say. We don't have your budget. Okay, you want to forget.
Was it probably? Repetuating, underperforming, bureaucratic. Can I ask him?
Yeah, uh, the, first you said.
Thank you much. Uh, before you recognize, uh, Chair Crye's motion, since I know I'm not supposed to talk after that. Um, Chair Crye, would you be open to having it be, uh, tabling until the last DFC? Before the last Navi, before the summer council session? Well, we don't know. I mean, just say, we could just say the last DFC before, because. I, I guess, I don't want to have it happen where we bring it back and he's still investigating and then. It's like we table, we, we can't table and fill again. Are you sure?
Okay.
I think these things take time.
For the next sixty days and you bring it back.
No, no, no later than six days. Okay. Let's do that. That's true. Or sorry, we can say in, uh, until summer casting. Is that, is that work? Okay.
It, yeah, but if you're not ready by then, I'm just saying, it's okay. It's going to clock agenda, but they'll see that we keep with it. Yeah.
Always going to go on, no, we still.
Yeah, the staff, the forty other.
Yeah, and we could, we could fix it and have everything ready there and then shake off an amendment to fix that, if we wanted.
Just passing on to now be right now.
Well, I don't want to pass it out of Navi the way it is, because it doesn't make sense, but. I, but bringing it to Navi, I'm not opposed to, but I'm only going to do that if the committee. If we agree on it.
You're going to clean it up and bring it back here for, for, you know.
That or clean it up, share all that information with you, and then we could do it then. That's, that's it. Because I mean, I can't offer an amendment to it, so we'll do that. But we'll work on all the things that are being adjusted.
But we'll work on it.
All right, uh, so I agree with that. Thank you.
The motion on that was low.
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted also to offer another suggestion, which is that, um, it could be tailed, okay? The then it was to Navi for the committee rules. Okay, that's fine too. Now you could refer it back to E S C. So the referral, the referral motion and the, say, one or two separate things. So if you go to Navi, Navi refers it, um, you wouldn't vote on it again. But because of the tailing motion constitutes a, um. An action. So what would happen is you could make sure that any of the documents that need to be. Bided and are all included, but all set, and then it goes back to Navi with the committee report from E S C and the proper document, let's check.
Sorry, that is too.
All right, um, well, it could be our, just for a, a motion, so. Chair, ever because the project is promotion to equal the legislation for the any program more than sixty eight. Yeah. All right. Or until, uh. January, what, twelfth of twenty twenty seven, all that stuff.
No, no, no later. Yeah, that was a dollar.
December, well, you got to, let's say, December thirty first. So no later than December thirty first of twenty twenty six. Is that okay? Generous.
We should do that for all table.
I mean, it never require a timeline. We make the provision ourselves.
It requires like a stipulation, right? It's like, there has to be something.
It requires something.
Yeah, but people always say a timeline, but it could be a condition being met, like. More information, whatever, okay. Well, I've agreed.
I don't like it.
Yes. That has never happened in this state of council.
I studied in my mind, you know.
All second. Very well, yes.
All right, question on the floor is to table the legislation for number sixty eight, it's the second phase of the show. We'll go to April, delegate, permanent be gay, have a vote. Delegate, permanent be able to screen, delegate, show the Nazi, have a vote. Delegate, show the Nazi, have a screen, show whoever has the right to vote. Uh, speak up with great, thank you for the legislation. Yeah, thank you, Chairwoman, Delegate, 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 delegate. The delegate, unless you're asking for three and vice chairman, Colonel, you vote. Vice Chairman, Colonel, votes three, legislation zero zero, it's an actual legislative, zero zero nine eight five. Uh, for tailing motion for number one in sixty eight, I'm pushing this very far. Putting in the permanent zero post myself, not voting, most of this is very. All right, thank you, members of the committee. Thank you, Vice Chairman, Charles, so you're the team with here, so that, that. After all, it's better for being with us this afternoon, this morning, this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, members of the committee here at the eight, uh, at our, with yesterday. I want to inform the committee that the. The study not by with the, uh, three hundred seventy.
I'll be here in the morning.
This may be not right, so the research and development committee, uh, they. Are requesting that the budget is my next, they sit down with this, and they open it on some date, so I had a question for the committee. Of course. Let's see, does July second, July twenty ninth, July thirtieth, or July thirty third, they're not in the meeting. All right, so. So, so the committee. I, well, I recognize that committee with research and development, yeah, as soon as possible regarding budgets.
Like in terms of passing the.
Well.
Like, are they going to be certified chapters or something?
Right, the, well, the question that they have is about the gaming distribution. There are no specific questions they have about that. And well, video after July twenty ninth, how's July twenty ninth?
Did it fight? I'm busy now, so. January twelfth, twenty seventh. No, it's zero. So July twenty ninth?
July twenty ninth is, eh, six fifteen. Or July thirtieth?
Twenty nine is good for nine, and. We're trying to get about. Hold it for our. Twenty nine is good. Yeah.
Not that, no. July thirty. This is for, uh.
I, I can do twenty eight to thirty right now. But all we scheduled.
July thirty.
I'm good.
Good.
You want to? Everybody get this.
Twenty nine is good. Wait, did you create word again? Thirtieth? Four, no, I'm not good. Not available, thirty, back to the twenty nine. Okay, how, hold the first part, thirty first. What do you have up to live? Yes, July, not two. The thirty first? This is the week after summer conference session.
Thirty first?
Thirty first. Is it first? Right, your figures?
Will that be before Thursday the month of?
One, two, three, four, fifth. It's a week after summer competition.
Yeah, I mean, I.
It'll be the budget, it'll be the budget or finance meeting after the summer session, after the.
More in person over here. But I'll save that as. Three at a time, or we're just?
Um. Well, I haven't you touched our leaders.
I'm free all the six.
Uh. This is twenty nine, okay? But you said more than great.
I want to have a PC.
Okay. All right. Well, the, well, the, you know, the research and development committee, um, our condition is putting that the money in whether our Arizona. All right, next.
Your combinations, what issues are?
The whole of the, of the game division, you should know specifically. All right, we'll.
It was just. The one that was sent to us was extremely general. And had a lot of stuff that it's very easy to find out the answers to those information, and it's not our obligation to. Do with.
We're not with that.
I mean, no staff can put that on both.
In the meantime, uh, to your party, I'd like to ask you some more research and development committee. Regarding any, um, technical questions, and then otherwise, we'll set, we'll set the, and we'll, then we're going to talk about. Okay. All right, we'll set aside that time, tell this to the committee, and then in the meantime, if this is a topic that satisfies. The questions of the committee, then we might not meet on that specific set of items, but I think that it's good for us to meet. Regarding the C I P, regarding, um, legislative concerns from budget finance committees and resource technology committee. All right, members of the committee, with that, grab the killer agenda, this will be on motion for turn. Motion by Delegate, show the Nazi, who is second to the motion. Second by Delegate Lester Gazi, members of the committee, who goes to a tall vote. Uh, Delegate, um, he is not in the group right now, Delegate, show the Nazi, delegate, show the Nazi, have a screen, Chairman, Delegate, have a vote. Get it. Uh, so, whoever has the right, vote screen, delegate, let's see, how do you vote? Delegate, last, we are the last three, and the first chairman, cross there, and the. Vice Chairman, cross there, what experience? Would that be have four members voting affirmatively, one over excuse, I still not voting, but the motion does carry, here, during today, I'm concerned to you. Um, I want to announce that these are the programs that we do not have. We do not have a budget for the fixed costs, or the F I twenty six budget, so appreciate. I think the office of the president, vice presidents here. Um, so the the fixed cost budget is not completed. The executive branch O P G P's budget is not completed. The veterans' budget is not completed, the office of the tax commission is not completed, the office of the controller is. Completed, the department of data education is not completed, the division on public safety is not completed. The department of transportation is not completed. Those are the programs, divisions that not have not completed their budgets. I don't know what's happening with the executive branch side, but please submit them to the office of legislative council. So that we can draw up these legislations, otherwise you're holding off the budget calendar for the nomination. Who would like?
Mister Austin.
Alright. That big mortgage on there. We do have accounts. You know, we might, right, we'll talk to the legislative council, which is in the base, they said. They don't submit their budgets. Alright.
Pass that next week.
We have the sense of the number I did as well, reminding them. Otherwise, we do have a calendar routine, budget and finance committee has set aside next week to hear budgets. So if your budgets are not in for the budget and finance committee, you're delaying the process. Alright.